Jerry? Jerry, can you hear me? Renee, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I see that there's one computer set up in the council chamber there, but it looks like Jerry's got two computers in front of him and neither one seem to be working yet.
Oh, no.
So, I'm gonna call Shandell up real quick and see what's going on.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. I just got myself muted while I'm on the phone.
I didn't realize I look like trash.
Can you hear us now, Mike? Renee, okay, good. Can you hear us, Mike?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, great.
I just got...
We have anyone here?
It looks like I've got you, Jerry Gross, Renee Race, Rose Powell, and then Shandell.
Okay, Rose is here for photos, not out, but that's all right. Billson.
Yep, I see Bill just showed up. Hey, Jerry, if you can hear me, I just got off the phone with Lisa. She says she's gonna be a few minutes late and ask if Shandell could have a computer set up ready for her at City Hall, please.
Lisa will be coming here?
Correct.
All right. Well, we'll work on it. Okay, I guess. I'll scoot down. And you scoot down.
That's right, man, touch it. Two arms length of six foot.
Something like that.
I don't know.
Yeah. Oh, that hurt wing. I guess I just scooted down and stuck her right there, I guess.
Jerry, I'm also working to get Pam situated. That might take a minute, okay?
Uh, you're...I didn't understand all that. Oh. Mrs. Neff, if you'd let me know that we're waiting for one more council person to arrive, then we'll start the meeting. It's now, just for the record.
I also know that Dr. Bremer sent an email and she's around sitting there and I'm supposed to read it, so... So I guess that was a little public comment, can you?
I guess, yeah, that's if that's the case, she would come under...
She can't log in for whatever reason, so...
Um, see what Mr. Womack would like to do on that, if...
I can hear you, Jerry. I could not hear what Shandell had to say.
Obviously, Mrs. Bremer can't log in. She's having problems, so she would like to speak during the public forum, but she can't log in for some reason. How would you like to handle that? Have her send a message to you and deal with it?
So, I already have an email from Miss Bremer. She asked me to read it during public comments on her behalf, but Miss Bremer should know, because I explained it to her earlier today, that you can telephone in as well. And all the information...
Your volume is in and out. If you're real low, we can't understand you.
Okay, there's a news item on the city's website that gives very detailed instructions of how to watch the meeting, and part of that is you can telephone in if you don't have a computer. So, if she would like, as I explained to her earlier today, you can call in by telephone, and then you simply have to have the meeting ID number, which is also listed there, which is 827-748-05902. Obviously, it's very difficult for me to get there to her house to help her sign in, but it should be fairly easy to understand.
Everybody's set. We'll call... Ready, Mr. Womack?
I'm ready.
All right. Mrs. Atchison, I believe, is at the door, so we'll have a slight delay again.
I'm still working to get Pam online. I don't know why she's not able to get online. She said she couldn't get into her email for some reason.
Okay. All right. Right here, get this section. And... Oh, sir?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
My ID isn't valid.
I'm the savior. Sign in. You have to sign in.
I'm in trouble. I'm in so much trouble.
And here we go. Mrs. Atchison is online. All right, we're all set. Don't call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, are you set? For the regular meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council, August 13th, to order at 7:06. If you would please all rise and we'll recite the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, limation, integrity, and individual, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all this evening for coming. Uh, we'll have a roll call mode. Those of you that are zooming in, if you can hear me, and your audio's not working, please shake your head yes and up and down for yes and sideways for no. We have a delayed action. Mrs. Atchison.
Here.
Mrs. Conley. Have we heard anything from her?
I have not seen Miss Conley on the Zoom call yet.
Thank you. Mr. Gross. Mrs. Nixon.
Here.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Ray.
Here.
Mr. Hall is here. We're only wondering, Mrs. Conley. Moving on. Public comment. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and the public hearing portion of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If, after communication with the city manager, no resolution is reached, concerns will be elevated to the mayor and eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. Mrs. Depp, do we have any...Ms. Clerk?
I have a email, Miss Abby Bremer, that she would like me to read aloud. City Council, we cannot attend the meeting tonight and request this message to be considered at time at the public forum. Please ask the clerk to read it so the public can hear our comments. I know it won't take four minutes to read. The decision to offer limited marijuana business licenses in a city of 3,500 is not in the best interest of business and property owners. The city manager's comments to the post noted that it was too many marijuana businesses come in and some of them go out of business due to competition. That will lead many businesses to innovate and re for a non-marijuana business to move in. He acknowledges this is a different approach from marijuana businesses than most municipalities are doing, so it is a bit of a long-term experiment. He says the time will tell if the approach will work better or not. City managers let them live in the city proper and they are not known for their longevity in those positions. Most often, Cedar Springs has the use of a second home for their careers and they need a gap for gaining experience that builds up their resume. As a resident who has 50 years invested in this community, the manager and council's experiment is something that they would likely think are property values, but he would be long gone when it happens and we would be stuck with a disaster. Limited marijuana businesses in a small town of 3,500 is ludicrous. Our city's building its reputation after years of being called Cedar Springs and the armpit of Kent County. Now, if this council doesn't fix this, we could earn the title of small-town marijuana capital of Kent County. We demand better. Rex and Catherine Bremer.
So, I heard both Shandell and the mayor speaking just then. Of course, I was sent that email as well, so I don't feel the need to reread it. I do have a second email that was sent to me by a member of the public. If I could read that at this time. So, here is the text of the email. This is from somebody I know as Craig L. Wilson. Quote, "Hello, Mike. I have been a chiropractor in Cedar Springs for 34 years and have paid taxes to this city. I can't believe that we are allowing stores to sell pot in our city. I know I should have voiced my opinion earlier, but I never thought it would pass by our council. I would like it known at tonight's meeting that I am against this. Thanks. Sent from my iPhone." I have Clint Conley, who just showed up. I'm guessing that's probably him, Conley, so I'm asking her to unmute and, I guess, announce herself.
I am here. Sorry, I was having some internet connection issues on the computer I was using, so I switched to Clint's computer, which is why I look like I'm a planning commissioner, but with more makeup.
So, I do have a couple members of the public, so let me go through and I'll ask each person if they're interested in making a public comment. I have Bill LaRose. Mr. LaRose, are you interested in making a public comment? I have Deputy Clerk Shandell. Are you interested in making a public comment?
I do not. Thank you.
I have an anonymous person by name of Galaxy S25G. Is Galaxy S25G interested in making a public comment?
That would be me, Darla Falcon, and I have no comment.
Thank you, Darla. I have Todd's iPhone. Mr. Probst, Sergeant Probst, do you have any public comment?
I do not.
That appears to be all the persons that are on this Zoom meeting, except for the council people.
Yes, Mrs. Atchison would like to have those emails sent to her email address.
Yep. I only received these emails late this afternoon, so I did not have the opportunity to send it to council prior to the meeting, which is why, one of the reasons, we are reading them at the meeting. Council knows, full well knows, my policy of transparency, and I do always forward those emails to the council members.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other persons wishing to speak before I move on to adoption of the agenda? Hearing or seeing none, would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there any changes or additions?
I'd like to make motion. We adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, it's been moved and forwarded to adopt the agenda as written. Any questions or concerns or roll call vote? Mrs. Atchison.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley. She votes, yeah. Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon. Mrs. Powell. Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hall votes, yes, the agenda is approved. The consent agenda. Everybody looked at over. Any questions or concerns? Or I would entertain a motion to approve the consent?
I'm sorry, Rose, I couldn't hear you. You had your microphone muted.
I'll unmute me.
Rose, I believe, was the one that voted, yes, seconded.
Yes, I made the motion.
Okay.
Support.
Reported it. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote. Mrs. Atchison.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley. Yeah.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yep.
Mrs. Nixon.
Mrs. Nixon.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes. Motion carries. Moving on down to action items. We have none, correct?
We do have, we do have a potential motion, I think. But, and of course, I always try to give you guys the opportunity to see these at least once before you take action, but of course, sometimes these are minor issues, so I guess I'll leave it to council to decide whether they want to make a motion. But as far as something that needs to be done, correct, there are no action items.
Everybody understand that? You're coming in as a really bad echo. Mr. Roemack.
Does it help if I lean close to the microphone?
It's still muffled. Apparently, we have been forced on this discussion item to allow Main Street restaurants in the B2 zoning district to reserve an on-street parking spot for a shorter term for takeout pickup. Ideally, that would be the Redbird or any other Main Street restaurants. They would, from what I understand, there would be a horrible sign up there for parking only for pickup. I guess if we would have to allow this emergency action, I believe, Mr. Roemack?
Yes, so this is something that I've been in discussion.
This is something I've been discussing with the restaurants about on Main Street, and of course, with the COVID-19 and takeaway, they have found great use in the parking spots located in front of their businesses for takeaway business. Well, I think with some of the new businesses coming into town, I'm just a little fearful that the on-street parking spots might be inundated with people going to the new businesses in town. So I was going to ask council if they would consider a motion to allow me to allow businesses, specifically restaurants on Main Street, to reserve, you know, parking spots that are located in front of the restaurants for takeaway parking only. I don't see any real downsides to it, other than I think it's appropriate that the city require that all restaurants use the same size sign, the same type of holder, so we have a little uniformity. And so that's something I would work with the restaurants on as well. But it's not something I wanted to approve on my own. I felt it was appropriate for the council to weigh in on it.
I have a question if I may.
Mr. Grove has a question. Go ahead with your question.
Mr. Roemack, under item 8A, we have an A and a B, which are two options for sign posts. Are we looking at purchasing them or are those proposed to be purchased by the property owner or the business?
No, the city would not purchase anything. The only reason I put those on your agenda was because I wanted you to see what I was talking about. Those are simply two options that would be available to the businesses themselves. And then I would probably limit the size of a sign that they could purchase and then put on top of their, I guess, roll away parking stand to perhaps 12 inches by 18 inches, which is about the same size as a no parking sign. It's just something we want to allow them to put curbside so that, you know, the, the parking on Main Street is reserved for the restaurants. So no, the answer is the city would not be involved in the purchase of anything.
The reason, the reason I asked was because with them being portion of this, if it became a motion to take action today, I wanted to know what we were actually making a motion on. If it's just the adoption of the dedicated parking spaces for the businesses or was for purchasing the sign post also. Thank you for your explanation.
Yep, so I think I put together a policy. Of course, this is a couple weeks ago now, so let me go back and read through the policy real quick. Yeah, so I guess, I guess what the policy is, is allow the city manager to approve of parking and signage on a case-by-case basis for restaurants on Main Street. As you guys know, I like working with the businesses. I want to do what's best for the businesses themselves, but I don't think it's appropriate to spend public money on something like this. So all I'm really looking for is council's approval to do this and then have some uniformity from the signage, so it just looks nice in downtown.
Ms. Addison, do you have a question?
Um, yeah. Was there a certain time that we were going to allow this, or is this something that's going to, we're going to allow for, from now till whenever? Or is it just during this time period?
Yeah, so I thought about that. So as council remembers, we passed a policy about outdoor dining until, I think, November 1st of this year. And of course, the anticipation was that nobody's going to be sitting outside in November, December, January to eat. I suspect that for a long time, people are going to want to be doing takeaway food. So I thought about that. I don't want to put a drop dead date on this just because, you know, this could be one of those things that is okay into the future forever. You know, I think it's going to be one of those things we're going to have to take a look at, see how things work out. I anticipate nothing will really change from now. You know, these restaurants have been doing takeaway business for a couple months now, and things have worked out fine. But as everybody's aware, we are going to have some new storefronts opening up on Main Street, and I want to reserve Main Street parking for the restaurants that have been using it this whole time. So people could park in other locations except for now, maybe these two parking spots that would be in front of the restaurants. Of course, council can, you know, motion to limit it to a certain period of time, but I think it's probably better just to let it go on until it causes a problem, or if it causes a problem, then we can limit it at that point. I couldn't hear that. Somebody might have had their microphone muted.
Yeah, unmuted. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you through Jerry's computer, but I can't hear you through your own computer.
Mrs. Powell would like to know how many spots would be set aside for the parking?
Sure. So in the policy, I think I said only parking spots that are located directly in front of the restaurant itself, which these restaurants aren't that big. I mean, we're probably talking two or three parking spots maximum. But of course, what we don't want is we don't want the restaurants to then reserve parking spots in front of them. I guess I would say that any parking spot that was directly in front of a restaurant would be an appropriate place for these, but nowhere else.
Or some of the, whatever is in front of the business. Up to two spots or just what's in front of the restaurant. Mr. Roemack?
Yeah, I'd be okay with that as a limitation. Of course, we always try to do things as reasonably as possible, and sometimes putting hard limits, you know, may not be reasonable. This is just one of those things that I think might be best on a case-by-case basis. But that would be my intention, is to only allow parking spots that are directly located in front of the restaurant itself.
Can you understand that, Ms. Powell?
Uh, yeah.
Well, what's the will of the council?
As a point of order, have we approved the consent agenda yet?
Yes, we have.
Okay. All right, you're good.
That was, uh, Mrs. Powell, Ms. Addison. Sorry, Ms. Nixon. We're in discussion on, uh, mystery restaurants, parking for onsite pickup for, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt.
As an action item, and allow the manager to examine accordingly.
Uh, support that.
Okay. In a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for discussion. Mrs. Addison?
I would agree with that, except for I would like to be able to put how many spots down, so that there's at least a certain amount of spots, so that we, they're not using like six. You know what I mean?
With the manager's, with the manager's explanation, or the motion is that he would have to use his discretion?
His discretion, okay. Yep, as long as it's that, that's taken care. I can't hardly understand what he's saying, so I'm sorry.
Is there any other discussion, any other approval of item A for pickup? Do I see anybody shaking their head, yes, or I call a moat? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to allow the city manager to set up the B2 zoning district to reserve an on-street parking spot for short-term takeout only. Mrs. Addison.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Grove.
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell. Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Was that yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hall votes yes. Motion carries. Okay, on item B. Item B. In discussion. Approve the city's takeaway parking and signage policy. Um, Mr. Roemack. Can you call me on my phone and talk to me that way and I'll put you on speaker?
Yep, so I just, I just called into the Zoom meeting. Can you guys hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. So I can hear everybody that is not in City Hall. I suspect that it's a problem with too many computers trying to use the Wi-Fi in the council chamber. So I can hear everybody who's not in the council chamber very clear, and then I can hear everybody through the mayor's computer for some reason, but nobody else. But, uh, thank you. I heard you guys motion and approve of 8A. And so I guess we're down onto 8B. Is that correct?
Correct. We've moved on to B.
Okay, okay. So I'm also getting a little feedback on my phone for some reason, so I apologize. I'll talk a little slow. I believe I brought to this view in the past. What's happened is, I believe two years ago, we discussed passing the 2018 Michigan State Fireworks Law update. At that time, the council felt that it was not necessary. This year, I felt that we had some confusion by the Kent County Sheriff's Department deputies about which law they needed to follow. So simply to bring us in line with the majority of other cities and the most current state law, I think it's appropriate that we pass this ordinance for next Fourth of July. Okay, I've just muted myself. Hey, there's the echo. Thank you, Ms. Nixon, for pointing that out to me. Can you guys still hear me?
Yeah, it's much better.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. You know, you'd figure after three or four months, we'd have this settled, but apparently not. Okay, so again, I apologize. It was my intention to bring council a complete ordinance for review at this meeting, but I was extremely busy with the planning commission. There's a lot of economic development going on in the city, not just marijuana, just lots of economic development in general. So I was very busy with them. I'm sure that Clint Conley can tell me exactly how many pages were in their agenda packet. You mentioned it multiple times during the meeting. But so I guess, before I put more work into this, does council have any objections to me moving forward with this? And did my explanation make sense as to why I think it's appropriate?
I, I do think it's appropriate.
Okay. Well, in that case, I will again attempt to draft a ordinance for the city. It's not a complicated ordinance. Basically says that we will adopt the standards that were listed in the 2018 state law, and then that way, for next Fourth of July, our sheriff's deputies will be very clear about what our local law says. So I will go ahead and do that, and I think that's really all I needed from you guys on 8B.
We have, Ms. Powell would like to speak.
Um, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
I can, I can barely hear you. Speak loudly, please.
Okay, what, does it have to come and can't come in effect before next Fourth of July? Can it come in effect before next Fourth of July?
She would like to know if it can come into effect before the next Fourth of July.
Yes. So I apologize. You are correct. I shouldn't use that as the benchmark. As council is aware, it takes at least two months to pass an ordinance. Since I don't have it ready for this month, the first time you would see it would be in your September meeting, and then you could theoretically pass it at your October meeting. Of course, Labor Day is another holiday that people like to set off fireworks, but we could have it as law by October.
Sounds good. She's okay. That would be fine. Roemack, does not the, Roemack, laws not restrict you from preventing them to use fireworks on the dates that they present? And does it not allow us then to allow it on other days if we wanted to?
So the way the state law is written, well, let me, let me start with our current law. So our current law allows for people to set off a firework on the day before, the day of, and the day after any national holiday. So if you look at the national holiday calendar, that includes days like Martin Luther King Day and Valentine's Day. So the new restriction allows fireworks to go, I think, from June 29th through July 5th, the weekend before Labor Day, the weekend before, um, the other major holiday in the spring, I'm drawing a blank. And then also on New Year's Day and New Year's Eve, it further restricts the time. So under current law, people are allowed to use fireworks until 2:00 a.m. of the following morning. Under the new law, that would be restricted until 11:45 p.m. of the day of, except for New Year's Eve. So it's just a little bit more restrictive. Um, but really, ultimately, I think it's appropriate to do so that our sheriff's deputies are not trying to enforce two separate laws at the same time.
Thank you. Okay. Any other further questions? I have speed to go hand in hand with the revamping of our fireworks pardons. Anyway, correct? Temporary business license for fireworks? Will bring all that at the same time?
Yep, but let me just explain the issue real quick. Um, so when I put temporary business licenses slash fireworks, um, it's really an issue with temporary business licenses. It just so happens that fireworks tends to be the one that really comes to be an issue. So, um, under the 2015 Peddlers and Temporary Business License Law that was passed by the council prior to my arrival, that law eliminated the ability of City Hall to issue temporary business licenses. Now, as you guys are aware, sometimes, uh, people would like to put up a tent in a parking lot and sell fireworks. Well, I don't think I have the legal authority to allow that now in the city. And with the fireworks store on White Creek Avenue potentially going out of business, I suspect we might receive a request next year for a fireworks tent to open up somewhere in the city. Now, I don't think it's strictly necessary. Uh, if people want to buy fireworks, there are locations they can go to, it doesn't have to be in the city. Uh, but I think it's something appro... whether it's something we even want to allow.
Any discussion on that or direction for Mr. Romanek?
I stand by your description of this, I support it.
Mrs. Powell stands by your description of this and supports it.
Supports allowing, uh, temporary businesses? Or supports the law the way it currently is where no temporary businesses are permitted?
Where no temporary businesses are permitted.
Where no temporary businesses are permitted. Is what she's saying that we do not allow any tent fireworks stores in the city, correct?
Are you looking at me?
What's that one, what's your thought? Leave it the way it is or change it?
Depends on what...
Depends on what it is concerning the... Might be other businesses.
Like, once you open the door, you can't shut it?
That's true. Um, I think that we should leave it the way it is.
Mr. Rose?
That's true.
I would have...
I would just leave it the way it is.
Just always say fireworks alone. I think if you want to define them, it should be more defined, is what we will and we will not allow. But I'm not sure right now what all it would be. So, I'm willing to talk about it more, I'm willing to see what comes up with it as far as what's presented in front of us. I'm just not sure whether we want to restrict it because the way it's written, it just says, uh, temporary businesses, that basically says everything. If we're gonna lock them all up, then lock them all up. Uh, but above it says temporary business licenses fireworks. It becomes very specific as to what we were kind of looking at, in my opinion, but I'm willing to discuss it more. Mrs. Nixon? Mrs. Nixon, do you have a comment?
I do, I am... I would like to further explore how we might allow those, uh, perhaps during a certain timeframe of the year? Or, uh, or what other things we would need to do going forward to make it equitable?
Thank you. Miss Conley?
I would agree with Mrs. Nixon, I don't... I mean, I would like to have further conversation, I don't think it's anything we want to try to make a motion on tonight, but it might be useful to have some kind of policy going forward to allow temporary businesses like that around specific holidays.
Thank you. Mrs. Ray? Your thoughts and concerns?
I agree with, um, Ms. Nixon and Ms. Conley.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Romanek? Kind of like, uh, see what you can come up with and, uh, of changing the temporary business licenses.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions or concerns moving on to Item B? Michigan or Cedar Springs Medical Marijuana Draft Ordinance, Mr. Romanek?
So, um, again, as council and I have discussed multiple times, uh, we were approached by local business owners who thought they might be interested in opening up their own marijuana business. Unfortunately, under state law, uh, you must possess a medical marijuana license for at least, um, a little while before you're able to apply for a recreational marijuana license. Um, now again, council and I have discussed this at length, we've had multiple public hearings and all that about all this. So I'm not going to dig up, uh, that whole long discussion. What I will tell you is that just recently, the Director of the Michigan Marijuana Regulatory Agency uh, announced in a news article that it is their intention to remove that requirement by November of this year. So in other words, two or three months from now. So even though, uh, the city attorney and I put in the effort and time to draft this medical marijuana license ordinance, I don't know if it's in our best interest to move forward with it. So I present it to council, uh, I guess I can take council's direction about how they want to proceed. But I guess my recommendation at this point would be to table this until at least November. We'll see what the state does. And if the state, uh, goes against what they've already announced, uh, we can readdress it at that point.
I would be in support of that position to table this for now. Uh, if our timeline to be able to get a new ordinance drafted was October, November, um, if we moved it through at an accelerated rate, and if they're going to fix the issue, then I feel like we're doing extra work for nothing.
I concur.
I... Was that a motion, Mrs. Nixon, in support, Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Then moving back into the table this. Item A. Yeah. Item D, Cedar Springs Medical Marijuana Draft Ordinance. Table it, any further discussion? Hearing none, rule call holding. Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Rose? Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell? Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hall, oh, yes, table it until further notice, thank you. Of course, did you get that motion? Moving on now to Communication, number nine, Mr. Romanek.
Uh, so again, council is intimately aware with the storm drain work that is going on at the new fire station building. Uh, I simply present you with a copy of the easement that we signed, uh, over to the Drain Commissioner uh, so that he can run that storm drain through that area. And I also put a info, uh, packet from Mission Point Health Services. Uh, they are taking over, uh, the building that was formerly Metron Health. And I had a nice sit-down chat with one of their liaisons the other day and, uh, told her I would forward this along to the city council.
Yeah, thank you, I did read that. Thank you, I did read that letter from him, it was very nice. Any questions or concerns on the communications from Mr. Romanek? Hearing none, moving on to the department report.
Oh, I apologize, Mr. Hall. If I could, um, for... I think I jumped the gun, I apologize. So, uh, two things I would like to address. Um, the other day at the Planning Commission meeting, uh, I did have a citizen who, uh, watched the meeting through his computer but didn't have a microphone on his computer. Uh, so we talked about how he could better access and he said he would try tonight. And I see Gary Wade is on the call. Uh, Mr. Wade, it looks like you might be on your phone today. Uh, when I called in, I had to hit, I believe, star six to unmute myself. Mr. Wade, would you like to attempt right now to unmute yourself and say any public comment to the city council at this time? Nope, maybe he's a little shy and doesn't want to talk, but, uh, nope, nope, there he is, Mr. Wade, can you hear us? Well, Mr. Wade is unmuted, but I don't know why he's not saying anything. Okay. Well, so, uh, I'll give him an opportunity to talk through me while I'm still talking, but the only other thing I would say is I received that email from Ms. Bremer earlier today. Uh, of course, Ms. Bremer and I talk on a regular basis. Um, there's no polite way to put it, I'll just say that that email is malarkey. Um, I've been doing what I think is best for the long-term benefit of the community, which is in line with the 59% of voters who voted in that election and has been, uh, worked out with both the Planning Commission members, of course, Ms. Bremer is a Planning Commission member, and also with the city council. So, uh, I think it's a load of malarkey and I... I don't agree with it. And, uh, with that, I will, uh, go on to the Department of Public Works. Thank you.
Yes. City Manager, do you have anything further?
No, thank you.
Hearing none. Department of Public Works, Infrastructure Alternative, I see Mr. LaRose was here and he is unmuted. Go ahead, Mr. LaRose.
I don't have anything to add, does anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions, Mr. LaRose, this evening? Hearing none. Police Department, I've seen... I think Deputy Probst was on here, I'm not sure, he may have signed off. Any questions or concerns about Police Department? Uh, contact Mr. Romanek? Oh, any questions or concerns? Sergeant Probst?
I don't have anything, but if anybody has any questions, I can answer them.
I don't hear anything right now, Sergeant Probst.
Can you hear me now?
Moving on to the... Anybody?
Yes, if you can hear me now.
Yes.
I can hear him.
I don't have any questions, but if... Or any comments, but if anybody has any questions, I can answer them.
I don't see any right now. Mrs. Conley, you have a question? No, I see everyone shaking their head no. So, moving on to Fire Department, Mr. Fraser. Chief? You have any questions to the fire chief? I don't see any heads taken yet. Oh, you'll be able to maybe buy it in the park at, uh, O'Reilly's here soon. Moving on, City Clerk. I hear a buzz. Mrs...
Um, the only answer for is we have a successful election. Um, the African voter, um, has been, uh, very successful, we had a new board to count both the chair and, um... Full bond pass.
Election issues. Moving on to Mrs. Powell and Finance Director and Corrector Report. Do you have any questions or concerns to Mrs. Powell? If any of you folks in the council have received a letter from our auditors, please make work of, uh, filling them out and getting sent back in. We have our annual audit coming up and there's a questionnaire, it's very important that you fill it out and get it back into the... Into the clerk or the treasurer. It might be in your envelope, I picked mine up tonight in my package. So if you have any questions or concerns, file me, contact our auditors. Code Enforcement, look in there, she's been busy, Building Inspections, Boards and Commissions, Ministers of the Boards, the Library and all of the planning. Any questions or concerns? Any videos to be brought forward?
I have nothing further.
Great, well, council comments, Mrs. Atchison?
Just thankful that everybody's working together and I think we're gonna have a lot to do pretty soon once the Planning Commission gets waved through all their stuff, so that will be great. But a lot of things happening in the city, I like that.
Thank you. Mrs. Conley? Any comments, Mrs. Conley?
Just a big thank you to everybody that worked so hard to make the election happen and make it safe. And I really appreciate that, and I look forward to having that happen again well in November.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. I heard a couple of comments early on which kind of disturbed me, but it's something that I've been concerned about for a long time. And it's apathy. Many times we discuss things and we don't hear anything from anybody. Then there's accusations in that we aren't listening. I wish people would speak up beforehand, uh, whether it's the types of businesses, any other actions we take. You see, you're speaking more to the public right now. Let us know what you're thinking. Everybody up here on this board is willing to listen. We will act to the best ability we have for the community, whether it's voting A or N on a business you're not satisfied with. Uh, there was a lot of discussion on the one. And I would like to see people take more part in the government and the decision making. Uh, the burden does fall up here, and we're willing to take it. The election this year, as far as I know, we have two seats open and only two people running. I would like to see that become a contest in the future. That's all I've got today. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rose. Mrs. Nixon?
I'd just like to thank the election workers for making this...
I'd just like to thank the election workers for making this efficient and safe and dealing with the influx of absentee voter ballots. And a continued thank you to City Hall Cedar, or Cedar Springs City Hall staff for adapting to difficult circumstances.
Okay, she must be done. Moving on, then, Mrs. Powell?
I think I remember on reading myself, many times, I guess one thing I'm concerned about voting this year is the poll office and all that root morale that's going on. I don't know about other people, but I know I can bring my ballot to my polling place, and I can personally bring it. And I wish the world would start talking about that because others can do it too. If they're worried about things that lots of them hate about, to the polling.
Definitely. Thank you, Mrs. Powell. Mrs. Ray?
Good evening.
Mrs. Ray, any comments?
Just wanted to thank everyone for joining. I'm not sure if you can...
You're breaking up in and out, but thank you. Okay, I guess that concludes the council comments. I have mine during these strange times with audio and visual problems. We're all in a learning curve here, coming down. Also, you know, like, as Mr. Gross had mentioned, the public, we sit here and we make the best of these ordinances. The ones we pass for the marijuana, if we didn't pass anything at all, there could be a referendum put on the ballot in November that would totally erase any of the ordinance we have on the marijuana bill. So as it is, we've put a lot of work into this marijuana ordinance to restrict it as much as possible to bring the businesses to town. So thank you, one and all, for all your hard work. The election went smooth. Thank you for your hard work, Ms. Nixon and the staff at City Hall. Is there any other councils at this time?
Thank you, everybody.
Turning at eight o'clock. Thank you, one and all. Be safe, and wear your face mask. It does fix the problem.
Hello?
It shows. Okay. Gary Wade. Hello?
Hello. Hello. Can you hear me?
Have Mr. Wade?
Yes. Yes.
Do you have a question?
Pardon me?
We adjourned the meeting.
We've adjourned the meeting. Do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to join the meeting and see. I talked to Mr. Womack yesterday and kind of got just sort of how to do joint meetings with the city of Cedar Springs and talking on my phone at the same time. And so I just wanted to make sure that it was going to work.
Yeah, work great. We can all hear you.
Welcome.
Real good. I probably will be joining open meetings in the future also, if you don't mind.
Yeah, we always look forward to it.
Okay, real good. Thank you ever so much for your time.
Okay, thank you, everybody. I'm going to end the meeting now.
Sounds good.